Okay, I think it's about 6:15. I think we're ready to get started here. We have, we have a lot to cover and typical to any town hall. These are actually special city council meetings, so we have certain protocols we have to follow. So because of that, I'm going to ask Mayor Krugshank to come up and open the town hall meeting.
All right, there actually are three council members here, so we do have a forum. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Bradley.
Here.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Absent.
Councilmember Seo.
Here.
Mayor Potem Alegría.
Absent.
Mayor Krugshank.
Here.
We have a quorum. Our next item in.
This room is becoming famous for that. Okay, well. Next, next item, please.
Our next item is the discussion topic.
Okay, I guess I'm introducing our city manager, Aram Maranian.
Thank you. Yeah, someone yelled, "Who?" Good evening, everyone. Aram Maranian, Ranch Palace Vertus City Manager. So before I get into tonight's presentation, I guess some of you may want to know that, that show, that program that's on television, I believe it's 3-0 Dodgers, so. And I guess I owe a lot of Dodger fans a huge apology for scheduling this town hall during, during the World Series where our team is playing with the Yankees, but you know, you'll understand why we are calling this meeting and I apologize also for such short notice, but we've got a lot of information to share with the public. We've got some really important information and it was, it was necessary that we come together this evening and you'll find out as we go through the program. So before I get into some of the outline of the program, I do, there are a lot of people in the house that I want to just give a big shout out for making an effort to come out and be here this evening. I want to first reach out to our partners at the state and federal level with Callowes. We've got Sherry and Robin from Callowes here this evening. It's very important that they're here. We've, we've got FEMA here this evening as well. We've got Katie, Jared and Stephanie from FEMA. We also have our representatives from our state and federal offices. And we've got Ted Liu's office here. We've got Assembly Member Murasucci, Senator Allen's office here this evening. I know we've got Jennifer who's viewing the, the town hall this evening and she's with Supervisor Hans' office. She's viewing and she's keeping track of what, what's going to be shared this evening. I see some former council members, mayors. We've got Jim Knight and Jerry DeHovik here. So thank you. And this is really important. And then I also, I'm sorry, I overlooked Public Works over there. So thank you from LA County Public Works for being here this evening. So that tonight, we want to cover basically two, two buckets of items. We want to provide you with an update on where things are at with our stabilization and our winterization efforts. I want to provide the community an update as to some of the city's requests. We've been doing a lot of stuff since the last town hall meeting, which I think was about four or five months ago, and there's been a lot that's been happening. And we try to share all that information. We're trying to be as transparent as possible with all of our staff reports and all the meetings. I come to the Wednesday dinners, the men, the bend. I've been to every single one and thank you for all of you being there. And just, just the camaraderie and the joy that's in that room. It's helping all of us get through this crisis, but I try to share information with the public so everyone knows where we're at. I want to be able to use this format this evening to share that information so you know, you're fully aware of what your city council and your city are doing to, to help you navigate through this, this crisis. We also have some information we want to introduce to the community this evening. Very important information that will be presented as it's the second half of today's town hall and that, and that's one of the reasons why Callowes and FEMA are here. So with that, I'm going to pause with my remarks and I'm going to invite our Public Works Director Ramsey Awad, yeah, he can come up here and, and he's going to give his presentation on, on an update on where things are at. We've got, we're saving the Q and A part to the end. So we're, we're going to try to spend 45 minutes going over all this information and then we'll, we'll leave the rest of the evening open for questions and answers, as well as for all of our friends that are on in the virtual world. They can put in their questions in the chat. We're keeping track. I've got my iPad here where I can look at the questions in real time. So with that, Ramsey, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, good evening. Just a sound check. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Thank you for being here this evening again. I will provide an update on the current status of the city's efforts with respect to deep dewatering wells and winterization. As, as I'm sure everyone here knows, the city council authorized in August the installation of deep dewatering wells based on oral data that showed the rapid movement on a deeper slide plane. And those deep dewatering wells began extracting water in September and showed very promising early results. Based on those results, on October 1st, the city council authorized both maintaining those wells as well as expanding the program to Abalone Cove. So I'll provide a summary of where that program stands today. Just as a recap, there are today a total of 10 deep dewatering wells that are extracting water. And these deep dewatering wells extract water both on the deeper slip plane as well as the shallower slip plane. They're designed to, in a slotted fashion that extracts water from both, so they have that effect on both slip planes. DDWs or deep dewatering wells, one through six, began extracting water in mid to late September going on sequentially. And initially, we're extracting about 100 gallons per minute each. That rate has gone down a little bit as the water table has gone down, which is to be expected, but still extracting about 500 gallons per minute combined approximately, which is a very positive result there. DDW seven and eight then came online thereafter and are extracting a combined 100 gallons per minute. And DDWs nine and 10 went live last week and are extracting a combined approximately 200 gallons per minute. These deep dewatering wells also had other monitoring wells that were installed with them that had instruments to gauge the reduction in water pressure. And as a reminder, the water pressure causes the uplift on the slide and that is what results in the movement. So it's very important for us to tie deep dewatering well, water extraction to reduction in water pressure to reduction in movement. And without getting too technical, the bottom line is we have continued, we've conducted surveys of a sample of points, approximately 19 points along the toe of the slide to gauge how effective these deep dewatering wells are. So first, we have had some slowdown in movement because of the dry conditions over the past several months, which has, which is definitely a positive, but we wanted to gauge what the delta was between the dry conditions and the areas where the deep dewatering wells were installed. And you can see here highlighted in yellow is generally the zone of influence of the deep dewatering wells compared to the other areas of the slide. And it shows pretty clearly a significantly greater reduction in movement, 30, 40% greater reduction in movement in those areas over a relatively short timeframe with wells coming online mid-September sequentially to the latest measurement in mid-October. So very positive results. And the most promising results, and to me, the most, the best results so far that we've seen is that in the Klondike Canyon slide in Seaview and Portuguese Bend Beach Club, a sample of four points shows that there's no movement, no movement at a sample of four points in Seaview and Beach Club. Initially, when we saw that reading, that was very encouraging, great result. We repeated that reading again last week and saw the same result. So this is the, exactly the trend that we want to see and we're optimistic that that will continue. But for that to continue, it's important for us to pay attention to what I call the other side of the equation, which is winterization. So we're currently underway with our winterization efforts, which consists of a broad range of work across the canyons in the greater landslide area. Much of the focus over the past couple of weeks has been on Altamira Canyon and Calvin Canyon. Most of the grading work and fissure filling and clearing is complete in that area. There's still some more that needs to be done and the lining will follow over the next couple of weeks. In, then next week, we are scheduled to start the winterization efforts again, the lining, sorry, first the fissure filling and the clearing to be followed by the lining in Portuguese Shibashi and Paintbrush Canyon, as well as in Klondike Canyon. And finally, work is underway in Seaview as well to fill the fissure at the intersection of Dauntless and Exaltant, as well as the other fissures on Exaltant and Admirable. The work on, the fissure on Exaltant and Admirable is scheduled to start later this week. We continue to have the geologists very closely engaged on the winterization efforts to guide the work of the construction crews. We're bringing in additional resources to speed up the work to make sure that we achieve the best possible results that geologists believe can be achieved. That's the summary of the current status of the deep dewatering wells and the winterization efforts. Another survey is being conducted this week and we hope that this trend continues. This is, I believe, the most optimistic that the geologists and city staff have been. And we hope that that trend will continue. Thank you.
I was going to say, we should, we should give a big round of applause because that's huge. The, the numbers we just heard really allowed, because it is very encouraging. We have been working so hard to get to this point. And, and the fact that what we ended up doing, instead of going in with the hydrogers, the horizontal ones, we went in with the vertical wells and we were told by the geo team that because of the, the degree of movement being approximately a foot a week, it's likely that these pumps will shear off and we would have to go in and replace them on a weekly basis. And what are we, we're about seven to eight weeks into this, not one has sheared off, which is an indication that we have made a big difference in terms of the land movement. So I, I think, I could see all the smiles on people's faces here and I'm feeling the same way. And so, but this, this hasn't been cheap. It's, it's been quite an expensive journey for, for Ranch Palace Vertus. And we can go on to the next slide here. And so we, we have, up until this point, I have to say admittedly, the city has been funding, your city council has been funding all of these efforts to stabilize this landslide. And we, we have spent a considerable amount of money. And I wanted to spend a few minutes just to bring to your attention like what, what this is costing, because many times at dinner, people are coming up to me and saying, "Well, can the city do this? Can the city come here and do this?" And, and I'm saying, "We're running out of money. We can't do everything. We've got to really prioritize where we're spending our money." And so I want to first kind of go over some of our requests because a lot, this landslide has picked up in speed because of the rain, because of all the rain. And so when, when there's a federal declared disaster, money becomes available through FEMA. And so the city, from the rain events that, that occurred this past winter between January 31st and February 9th, the city collected its, its costs that we spent and we put in a request in, as you can see on the screen, we asked for $38.4 million for the winter storms. This is just the city. I know the two districts put in their requests, but the city asked for 38.4 million for the winter storms. And that's, that cost includes our, the city's response to roadway damage, trail failures, traffic lights out, debris removal, but it also, we, what we did is we asked for cost recovery for our dewatering wells because we're saying, the city's position is our landslide showed an uptick in its, its rate of movement, that delta should be considered damage as a result of the storm. So that's the city's position. We also put in a request for $22 million for individual assistance. You've heard me say this at city council meetings, you as individuals, we put in that request. We've been told by our representatives, it's not this group, this group is a different, there are different houses in FEMA, but, and FEMA, but the other house in FEMA has said that we're not eligible. And, and we've also put in a request for a million dollars in response to the power shut offs. In total, we're asking for $61.4 million in terms of cost recovery. In terms of being honest and transparent, Wednesday, last Wednesday, we were told our cost recovery is basically being denied for, for most of that $61.4 million, with the exception of some, we think we're going to be eligible for the de-energization cost recovery and perhaps $500,000 for the winter storms. So, so we're going to be denied. And I've said this at the council meeting, the way the process works is when we get that letter of determination, we have 60 days to appeal that decision. So anyone who's gone through a house development in the city and you know when there's a notice of decision, you can appeal that decision from, from the director to the planning commission to the city council. We're going to appeal it to Area 9, District 9 with FEMA. There is a determination made by the administrator there and then we can appeal it one more time to headquarters in Washington. So we're going to appeal, we're going to try to get some funding here for the, for our community. If you go to the next slide, in terms, in terms of what we have spent out of the city coffers for, for the response of what, what Ramsey just went over, we are looking at having in, in a three-year period from October 2022, which is predates the acceleration of landslide to where we, we're going to end, where we're projecting we're going to end at the end of this current fiscal year. So June 30th, 2025, we anticipate spending $43 million. Of that $43 million, $32 million is, is this fiscal year that we're in. And that's what we're, that we think we're going to end up spending from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. Those about $37 million. So, and I just want to highlight the, the color bars that you see on this diagram, just so you, you understand. The, the bars that are in orange represent the money that the city is spending as recently as October 1st for our response to, as an emergency. So the dewatering wells, the stabilization efforts, the winterization, the green bars represent just our routine expenditures. We pay our assessments to the districts, we pay for remediation efforts in the landslide and, and I believe the other line item. Those are the dues and the tax, the tax assessments as well. So those are, those are the costs that we should, and I just wanted to put that all in so that you understand what's, that the results that we're seeing has a price tag to it, but, and we're trying to find ways to cover that, that cost. If you go to the next slide, what we've, what we've done, I think it was about two weeks ago, we put in a request into Congressman Liu's office and, and we've got representatives here this evening from his office for $20 million. And that $20 million is, is hopefully could be earmarked as part of a disaster aid package that may or may not end up materializing. It's still, it's still working its way through and I think we'll know better in a few weeks. And I think there's a big, there's another big event next week and I don't think it's a baseball game, but, um, so we'll see what happens at that case. But what we're doing, we're asking for $20 million. I know last Friday, I, I came to realize that that's not even enough considering how much we're spending. So we're looking at asking, revising our request to increase that. And I'm working on putting that request in, but essentially it's to cover costs for three basic areas. It's the, it's what we've been saying since the 1970s, what we need to do to manage this landslide. It's to fill the fissures in, make sure drainage swells can convey the water to the ocean and then extract the water from the ground. If we go to the next slide, utilities, all of you, I, I don't know, I applaud all of you for how you are responding to the utility shut offs. I, I, I know how I react when it's just a couple hours of no power. I don't know. And, and I hear, I speak to all of you about seven weeks into this and how resilient you are. We're very aware of every, the hardship it's, it's put on all of you as residents. And when the, when the public, the California Public Utilities Commission came out on October 7th, and they heard from all the utility companies, primarily Southern California Edison and SoCal Gas, the question that the commissioner wanted to know was what, what's happening? And they, remember, it was just one commissioner and just like a council meeting, you can't ask questions. You've got to wait till, till it's officially on their agenda. But this, this commissioner came out to learn, to understand what's happening. And both utility companies, as they told the city, it's, it's for life and health and public safety reasons. And that's really hard to contest, but that's, that's the position that the utilities are taking. Well, you heard the numbers. You know that we're, we are now seeing a stabilization in this landslide in two neighborhoods, the Beach Club and Seaview. And based on that data that we received, the city sent, the mayor and the city council sent a layer, a letters to Southern California and SoCal Gas on Thursday, October 17th. And we asked that the utilities respond to us in three days and tell us, because we asked that they turn and they re-energize these two, these two neighborhoods because of the data. Well, we heard back from them that Monday and they basically said, "The data is, is encouraging, but we still need to study it some more. We need to go out there. We need to have our geologists look at this data." They said, "We need more time." I, I wasn't surprised by that response, but we are pressing them to continue to work aggressively to, to get those utilities turned on, especially in those two neighborhoods that we are now have solid data that, that documents that there's no movement. But we also learned last Monday that 16 properties in the Portuguese Bend Community Association were being re-energized, as well as I believe 12 properties in Rolling Hills. They wouldn't give the city this, the exact addresses, but the streets, I believe, were Plum Tree, Fig Tree and the western portion. Is it Fruit Tree? I knew, I meant to double check that. Thank you for correcting that. I'll make sure I correct it. But 16 of those properties were able to be re-energized. However, and I want to, I want to put this out there because one of the issues that Southern California Edison is facing in, in being able to re-energize is when residents went with generators or chose alternative means to respond, some people pulled the meters out or did things to their meter boxes. Now that makes it difficult for SCE to connect. And so I say that to all of you in the room and watching, if you did anything without permits and you didn't, please go spend the time because it's likely that you will get re-energized. You need to be prepared. Otherwise, you're going to have to, you may be delayed while all your neighbors are getting power turned off. It may take another three to four weeks till you get power. So work with the city's building official. We are not charging. We're not looking for anything other than making sure your generators are, and your meter box are all operating properly for your safety, for the safety of your neighbors. Next slide. So now we're at the, the point in the presentation that I felt was necessary to bring us all together here tonight, the night of the World Series, to introduce what was introduced to the city just a few weeks ago from Callowes and FEMA, what is considered a property buy out program. And it's exactly what you're thinking through your heads, your minds is buyout. There, there is funding that is coming to Ranch Palace Vertus for those residents who want to voluntarily sell their property because of the, the damage that they've incurred with this landslide through funds from FEMA. What I'd like to do is walk you through the, the details of the program. And then when we get to the Q and A, I'll hand it to the pros that, that can answer the specifics to questions that may come up as I walk you through it. The reason why I'm walking you through it is we've customized this program for, for Ranch Palace Vertus and, and the, the city's more familiar with the way, the details that we put into this plan. So if we go to the next slide, this, this, this buyout program is being funded as a grant that is coming through FEMA, which is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This grant program essentially gets funded whenever there's a federal declared disaster in a state. And because there was a federal declared disaster in December, in January and February from the winter storms, the state received, I'm looking over here, $211 million. And that fund, that money came in the form of a hazard mitigation grant program. And what happens is that grant program opens up to all cities and, and agencies in California. Well, that program opened up several weeks ago, in fact, maybe, maybe a few months ago. But it wasn't until a few weeks ago that Callowes and FEMA came to the city and said, "We were able to secure some additional funding of $98 million for California, of which $42 million will come to Ranch Palace Vertus to, to fund this program." So this is, this is really important. It's $42 million. This program, remember, it gets funded whenever there's a federal declared disaster. And so there may be other opportunities for more money to come to Ranch Palace Vertus for this particular buyout program. And I say this because $42 million sounds like a lot of money. I mean, when I heard that number, I was like, wow. But when you stop and you think about the property values and what they cost, it's not a lot. And I'll walk you through that as well. Next slide. So what I've done here is I put a very simple flow chart and we have a handout that has all the guidelines that we're going to give to you this evening and it's available online as well. But with this flow chart, I just want to walk you through, because we have to, we have, we have to move very quickly on this because it's a very last minute program that was introduced to Ranch Palace Vertus. And I say this because the grant, grants all have deadlines. Well, this grant deadline is November 29th of, so of 2024. So we have like four to five weeks to get everything in order. And because of that, and by the way, if you're taking screenshots, it's all in, it's all in a handout that we'll give to you when you walk out this evening. And we'll post this as well on the city's website so you can, oh, it's being handed out right now. Thank you, Dan. So I'm just going to walk you through this cycle here and then go through all the specifics in this program. So if, this is a voluntary program. I'm going to reiterate, this is voluntary. We're not using any form of eminent domain or anything like that. If you want to, you can, you could, you could start to proceed with the process. If you're not interested, you, you don't need to really think anything more other than just listen to what the, the program details are. But if you are interested in selling your property to the city as a typical real estate transaction, your application is due to the city by November 8th at 4:30 PM. That is a week from this Friday. If, if you submit an application, we have to go through a screening process with Callowes and FEMA to make sure you are eligible. And there has to be a benefit cost analysis. And I'm going to just go through this very high level and then the next slides will walk you through the details. If you are, if you meet the eligibility and the, the prioritization requirements to, to continue to move upwards, remember, 42 million isn't going to get us a lot. And so we've got to prioritize who, if 50 people come in and we can only fund 20, who are the, going to be those 20 people that we fund? So we've had to come up with that program. And by the way, this, this buyout program is a model that's used by FEMA throughout the United States, but it's typically for flood prone areas. It's a flood program that was customized for this particular landslide. So this is, this is very unique. There's no other place that has uses for landslides. It's primarily for flood. So if you, if you meet the eligibility and the, the prioritization, you, you as an owner will be notified. And you could decide at that point whether you still want to continue to move forward. You can always withdraw. You're always able to withdraw through this process. So if you commit to something and then like a month from now, you decide, you know what, I want I want to stay in my house. You can withdraw your application. There's no penalty. So you'll get notified. And if you are willing to continue, we will then open up escrow, typical to any real estate transaction, and the transaction would be between the city, the buyer, and the seller, the property owner. We will go through escrow, we'll do an appraisal. And so I think this is what everyone wants to know. So the appraisal will be, the city will select an appraiser. And the value of your property is going to be based on December 1st, 2022. So the acceleration in the land movement started in the basically winter of 2023. So we're going pre-incident. This is very important for all of you. We're going pre-incident to get the value of your property then, rather than currently. So so December 1st, 2022 is that critical date. The city will hire an appraiser. If if you, a a resident does not want the city's appraisal, appraiser, you could, a property owner could select their own appraiser, but at your own cost. And that appraisal will be vetted through CALOES and FEMA. Based on that agreed upon value, we will continue to move forward with the application that FEMA will review. Remember, this is a grant, so FEMA is going to review this. And if you get approved by FEMA, you will then be asked to if release the city and all other agencies of any liability and indemnify the city. That is a requirement of this program. We will, if you check that box, you sign those documents. We will then proceed with closing the property transfer. What's required is once the property and at that point, at that box there, you can't then withdraw. Once we close, we close, there's an exchange of funds. It's typical to any sale of of a property. The bank, if there's a bank loan, that will get paid off. And then whatever equity is left, you will get a check for that. But the city then takes ownership of that property. And then you're going to ask, well, what does the city do with that property? Well, that property is required to be converted or to open space area. So what we, the city would, would, what would, the next step would have to be done is the demolition of all structures and improvements, including driveways, hardscape. All that has to be removed, regraded, and it would be deed restricted for open space in perpetuity. So that's, that's the cycle of the flow chart here. I want to go over some key slides here that's in your handout. If you go to the next slide, please, the appraise. The next slide is the eligibility. So this is, this is important because, like I said, $42 million. We've, we've already done a basic rough estimate of how many, what the property values are, generally speaking, in in the entire affected area as of December 1st, 2022. And by the way, you can go into the Zillow apps and then go backdate, and you can find out where your property is by backdating it. That's essentially what we did. And we're, based on property values in 2022, we figure $42 million may get us around 20 properties. That's not a lot considering how many are in the affected area. So we had to come up, and this is typical to the flood program. We had to come up with eligibility requirements. So first, right off the bat, the property cannot be owned by the bank. So I say that in the sense that if you're, if there was a foreclosure and and the bank owns the property, that the bank can't come, so Bank of America can't come up and say, we want, we want you to buy out. If you have a loan on your property, that's not what we're talking about here. It's if the property has been foreclosed. So so a bank can't own the property. The property should not have sold since December 1st, 2022. So if a new property owner bought in after December 1st, 2022, they're not going to be eligible. This is for those who have gone from the very beginning through this process. This is an opportunity for you to sell that property, not someone who came in who saw a reduced property value, wanted to buy, and then trying to get a market value from December 1st. The property must be improved with legally permitted structure. So if there is anything that's not, was not permitted, it's, you're not eligible. This is important for some people because in some areas, properties may have, the improvements may have moved on to other properties because of the land movement. And it has to be, the structure has to legally be on the lot it was permitted on. And that's, that's, if it's not, it complicates the situation because you're buying a lot that doesn't have the legally permitted structures on it. And for that reason, you are not eligible for the, for this grant. And and then you have to be the legal owners of the improved structures. And that's essentially what I just went over. So the next slide is how do we rank it in priority, in priority? So let's say we we only have money for 20 homes, but 50 people come forward and say, we want to, we want the city to buy our our property. Well, like I said, right now, we only, we only have funds for this cycle. There may be other cycles that come our way. In fact, there may be a federal declared disaster for the wildfires. There's still other incidents. I mean, we're in California and we we tend to always have some. And I don't think there's been a year that we don't have a federally declared disaster. And I just, I'm saying that just to say that. But what's important here is it, again, this is voluntary. We want to first and foremost, and this is the priority order. We want to be able to take those properties that have structures on them that are red tagged off, off the people's burdens because they are going to have to then repair those structures. So that is the highest priority. If you own a lot that has a structure that's been red tagged, you will move all the way to the top of the the eligibility or prioritization. If it's a yellow tag structure, you come, you come next. Properties that have structures that may be in in harm's way or imminent threat of being red or yellow tagged, you come third. Properties that have been de-energized, which is basically, I've pretty much everyone in this room except those sixteen property owners, you, you then come next. The other two bullet points is essentially saying that if where you fall, if your property has a value to the city for its stabilization and winterization, you then move up the list as well. And then lastly, if the property adds to the continuity and is congruent to the open space areas and it adds to the value of the open space areas, you then move up the list. So that's, that's essentially the prioritization. And this is all in your handout. There's more detail in the handout and the guidelines there. But I wanted to just highlight some of the items here. You go to the next slide. So again, I I'm just going to reiterate myself here. The appraisal, the city selects the appraiser. CALOES reviews and approves the appraisal. The, a property owner at your own cost can can hire your own appraiser. Next slide. So at closing, I just going to highlight again, we have to demolish all the structures. The site will be regraded. There's going to be a transfer of ownership. You've got the deed restrictions for the open space that would be in perpetuity. And I say this because this is also is is we're going through this transaction. There's, there's a cost that the city is going to incur because now we we've got open space that we're going to have to continue to maintain. And it may be cases where it's just pocket parks or pocket open spaces in between homes. If someone decides not to sell in a certain neighborhood and someone does next door, it may end up being one lot, open space, another lot, a house, another lot, open space. So that's something, and the idea is that if, as more cycles open up, that the funds become available and people who may not take advantage or may not move up the prioritization list, this cycle may be able to move up the next cycle. In terms of city costs, this is really important. I realize I didn't make a slide here. But the way this works is FEMA's grant to the city covers 75% of the purchase. The other 25% is going to come from the seller. So the seller is going to have skin in the game, and they're going to, they're going to give up 25% of that purchase price to to sell the property at the value of December 1st, 2022. So it's a 75, 25%. And typical to any hazard mitigation grant, it's always a 25% non-federal dollar. And in this case, the way the program has been written, it's the seller that's going to incur that that 25% cost. Next slide. So I I want, this is, the other thing is, at this point, we only have two structures that have been red tagged. And I believe six structures have been yellow tagged. And and for the most part, that's because we've been asking people, residents, to ask us to come and do a voluntary inspection. We are still calling it a voluntary inspection. There's no requirement. If you are interested in this program and you want us to inspect your property, because now you feel like this is something that you want to pursue, we're asking that you put in a request for an inspection by Monday, November 4th. That's a week from today, by 5:30. That will give the building official and his team a few days to come out and do the inspections and and determine the structural integrity of your property in time for that November 8th deadline. That deadline is fast, and that's because we have to put all this information together, get it to our friends with CALOES, who then have to do their their benefit cost analysis. They have to put the package together and get it to FEMA by November 29th. And if we don't make it that day, we are now out of luck. We we will not get a single dollar. So so if you want the voluntary building inspection request, please submit that to Building and Safety. You can call or or do it online for an inspection. I do want to say to you, if your structure is red tagged, that means you have to vacate the structure. So that's something, you need to be mindful of that. If you call the city and you think your structure could be red tagged because the the majority of it is in severe structural damage, you may be asked to, you will be asked to vacate the property. If it's yellow tagged, it still, portions of it could still be accessed. It could still be occupied, depending on how the building official determines that. But you need to keep that in mind as you decide if you're interested in this program and you want to make that call for us to do this inspection, please keep that in mind. If you are red tagged, you will be asked to vacate the property. Next slide. Applications again are due by November 8th at 4:30. Next slide. I, this is really important because I do not, nobody, the council wants no one to feel that this program that is being proposed to you is any indication that the city is walking away from any of its winterization or stabilization efforts. Complete opposite. We are continued. We are invested. We are spending all this money. We are doing our work to make sure we stabilize and hopefully end up seeing zero numbers on the west side like we're seeing on the east side of landslide. So this by no means has any bearing on what we as a city and all the activities that we are doing in efforts to stabilize the landslide. We will continue to do what we need to do. It's being offered to you as a property owner and for you to determine with your family whether this is time for you to walk away. There's a way to to make you whole as best as we can. Next slide. They can always.
Withdraw.
Yes, and and just to reiterate, you can always withdraw, except when you get to that site, that part of the flow chart where it says closing, at that point, you can't withdraw. So at that, I'm going to end it here and we'll open it up. This is the, this is essentially the town hall presentation we want to share with you this evening. I want to remind you that all this information is available on the city's website. We posted the handout. You're here in the room. You received a handout. For those that are watching, participating via Zoom, it's live on the city's website. So you can download the the guidelines and the application. So to that, I'm going to stop. I'm going to open it up for questions. We've got the whole team here. You've got questions for Ramsey. You've got any type of questions. We're all ears.
Yes, Jim. And we've got, we've got a mic that's floating. We're going to.
Okay. We're just going to use the mics because we want to make sure that people in the background here all hang on to the mic for you.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things, since we have FEMA here, I guess I'll address some of the FEMA, FEMA things. One of the things I heard was that FEMA didn't want to grant any money to us is because the last slide was a known mapped area. I'd just like to comment that there's all kinds of tornado areas. There's all kinds of hurricane areas that are well known as well. So I don't quite buy that that argument. Secondly, I would like to see an option two to this program. Option A, yes, they can, if somebody wants to go through the whole program, they could do that. But I would like to see an application process by which we forego the purchase of our homes and we dedicate this money that FEMA has dedicated to us to go to the landslide mitigation.
That's not an option. This, this, this program is funded and has been approved at the federal and state level as a buyout program only. So and and it depends on the prioritization, but this is a buyout program. Other funds have been set aside for Rancho specifically for a buyout. I would love for it to go towards, you know, we're asking, and by the way, we, we, the city completely agree. We think that we should be eligible for disaster recovery funds, and that's why we're going to appeal it because we feel, even though it was a pre-existing, there was a delta, there was its change that is documented as a result of the rain.
Sorry, could you just, I want to make sure I capture this audio.
Just a follow up. If they have the money for the buyout program, I'm not sure why they don't have the money for helping us with the mitigation. That's just.
I understood. I didn't.
I don't think they have the ability to move it between accounts. Sorry.
Why don't they have the money for for mitigation? Anyway, that's, that's.
Aaron, you have a question on the far side of the room over there.
Let's say I'll share you one second before, maybe, maybe our guest from FEMA. I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe CALOES or FEMA can talk about how this money's been selected and.
Boy.
Should just be working.
It's just on. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. Hi, my name's Robin. I'm with CALOES. I'm the State Hazard Mitigation Officer. I will say that I, so I I hear the concern about how the money is appropriated. The grant programs that I administer specifically are for non-emergency work. And the way that I would say the FEMA regulations categorize like the winterization work, the way that it's categorized in our whole disaster recovery suite of programs, it's considered emergency work. So the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program can't fund the winterization efforts because we, I mean, honestly, I've I've met with both Ramsey and Era for months since I think like, what, March? Trying to figure out if there's ways that we can cover some of this. And we've, we're trying to get as creative as possible, but this was, we got this additional money. And we thought, well, this is what we can set aside. This is what we can do. Let's see if this can at least help for some property owners who may not want to accept some sort of uncertainty or risk with their properties that are either already failing or at imminent risk of of failure. It's just kind of another one of those options that we're able to leverage, but we can't take it and move it towards that emergency funding. I mean, I I agree. I wish that we had a lot more flexibility. I guarantee that people sitting next to me also wish that they had a little bit more flexibility in how they could administer this particular funding. But it's just the way that the program gets, it's how it's defined in the the federal statutes. But we do try to, you know, this is this kind of like one of those menu of of options that FEMA offers. You know, the Individual Assistance Program wasn't eligible. I don't oversee that program and neither do the FEMA folks to my left either. But this is kind of like a blend, if you will, of the, what you might expect from individual assistance or trying to help individual property owners who don't have a lot of options. It's like Era mentioned, other, other states and territories and tribes across the country have leveraged this money mostly for flood mitigation. Occasionally, communities will do it for big tornadoes as well. But it's really focused on trying to help make the individual property owners who've been impacted by a disaster who don't have a lot of options. And you can't sell your house once it's, you know, red tagged or yellow tagged. You don't have a lot of options. So this is kind of just one of the other things that we could potentially leverage. And the hope is, you know, this is almost like, I don't, I mean, I don't want to say it's a pilot because this is going to be a long term effort, right? But this first iteration is really to iron out all of the the moving parts, right? This is going to be something that's going to impact the community for a. This is going to be something that's going to impact the community for a long period of time. And if we can get some success for those property owners as they're impacted, um, we can hopefully create, you know, a much safer community for everyone here in the room and who are listening online. And that's what our goal is, is just to try to leverage whatever funding we have available. When this, when we started doing the number crunching, we're like, we have this funding available. We immediately reached out and said, hey, this is something that we could do. Would there be any property owners interested? And so we've been moving, I would say at lightning pace. I mean, which in our programs, I'll, I'll dampen some expectations. Our programs are not lightning fast. They're not like the typical recovery programs that are, that cover that emergency work that the city's really undertaken. Um, so we're trying to work with what we have to try to offer what we've got, and then we can potentially build some more. If that makes sense. I just want to let you guys know, we definitely hear that. And I, if there's other allocations or other ways that we can do some of the other work that the city's undertaking, we're definitely gonna try to explore those options, both FEMA and outside of FEMA.
I know Sherry had a question.
Yeah. So let's say, um, the houses around you all agree to sell and are all bought. And you're near the preserve. Is there any way the city could come and take your property by eminent domain or something? Or would they ever do that? Can you guarantee us that wouldn't happen?
You, we, in in the handout that's in front of you that you've been given, it says clearly the city is not using eminent domain for this buyout.
Thank you.
Who's, who's next? Okay, Tasha.
Hi, Ara. Um, so I've got two questions about that and one very quick or or two areas about what you just said and one quick follow up in terms of FEMA uh, basically disqualifying us for funds, saying that the landslide is a preexisting condition. There's a map of California that shows almost the entire frickin' state has a landslide potential. Um, so I don't understand that logic at all. And I know most of my neighbors don't understand that logic at all. So I would love for someone from FEMA to explain that because that just makes absolutely no sense. And we are having a really tough time understanding why after, um, the governor decl- went with the city's declaration for us to be in a state of emergency, they haven't even come down to take a look at the property or at the area. And they're saying it was a preexisting condition when almost the entire state is a preexisting condition of prone to landslides.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Katie Lipiaki. I'm the mitigation division director out of FEMA region nine. We're based out of.
We can't hear you. Sorry.
Try and move it a little closer. Is that better? There we go. Uh, Katie Lipiaki, mitigation division director out of FEMA region nine. Um, and I I can't say too much about the emergency work because it's unfortunately falls outside of my program area. I will say though, these are two, I would think about them as two different processes. Um, and so they they are a little bit separate. And so for the folks that are here with FEMA and with the state, I would encourage us to to think about the mitigation, uh, program that we're talking about, this acquisition or buyout program. And then the other process that was mentioned, um, is going through that, um, determination memo and then the appeal process. And so I'd encourage us today, um, because the experts that we have over here, um, can speak to the acquisition or buyout program. And then thinking about, um, the other process is just a slightly separate process. Um, certainly we'll take your concerns back and and be able to get the right experts who will be able to address your concerns and get them in touch with Calloway S and the city.
ASAP would be great because we've been speaking for it for a long time.
All right, I know you have some questions.
I should, two questions.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Go ahead.
And again, Tasha, I said that we were going to appeal that decision, um.
I understand that they seem to be putting up some walls no matter what.
We, we, we have a due process and we're gonna pursue that because we share your position as.
I know you do. Okay, so the question, um, I have specific to the areas that we have impacted by the landslide. So, um, with this process for the possibility of a buyout, it would seem to me, and maybe I'm making a generalization, but that we are eliminating two thirds of the landslide complex by not the prioritization, but by the way it works. So most of the homes are badly affected in the upper bend are not sitting on their own lots anymore. So that precludes them from being able to be part of it. And the homes in the beach club, um, are on private property uh, in terms of the beach club and maintenance of our roads and everything. So I'm having a tough time understanding how if one of the owners in the beach club decided that was what made sense for them, the city would then be responsible for maintaining parkland within a private, um, community. So if you could explain that, because it sounds like only sea view is potentially even an option.
So the city owns, um, property in the community association, which is is a gated community and private streets similar to the beach club. And so in that case, so we're, we're not saying parklands, we're just saying open space. So it could be just an open space slot. Well, we, we ma- we maintain our, our property. So we are, we would be the, the owner of the property. And so we would still maintain it.
Okay, so what about the poor people in the upper bend who don't have their properties on their lot through no fault of their own through a, something called a landslide?
Yeah, and and so, and there are those properties in zone six where, um, those homes have slid onto other lots, legal lots based on, I I know Ben, I see your hand there. Um, I think there's a different opinion about how we determine property lines. We are following, um, the court rulings that property lines don't move. And that if, if you, if your property, if your improvements have moved on to someone else's property, you can't go through, we can't go through a muddled, uh, real estate transaction that, um, affects. And so those, in fact, those properties, and I, and I'm just gonna speak from my experience, those homes in this landslide have not been affected because they've already been, they've been dealing with land movement for, for decades now, and they're on cargo containers, they're on I beams. They are, the reason why they're on other people's lots is because they've moved with the improvement. So this is, this is probably not going to, most definitely not gonna apply to those properties in zone six.
One thing, I'm sorry, it's Robin again. Wow, that's way louder now that I'm closer to the microphone. Um, one thing, yeah. One thing I will add is like era mentioned, that this, this buyout kind of process that FEMA has was, you know, created for flood hazards. So we're kind of trying to be creative and first bitten the square peg in the round hole. You know, this is kind of what the situation is. So we have to, it's, it's not going to be as cut and dry as it is for a flood, you know, program. So that's, you know, we're trying to, I don't want to say we're piloting it, but I mean, it really is like, we have to figure out some of these more tricky legal issues. And I think for the, the city's first go at this, it, we have to make it easier to implement, right? So it's, 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 it gets a little bit tricky when we get some of the weird legal litigation issues or potential litigation issues about property rights and who owns which square foot and which, you know. So this is, it's a flood program that we're trying to apply to a landslide. And it does complicate things. I definitely hear you with how it kind of changes the eligibility of certain structures. But it's, it's kind of the nature. We're trying to figure it out as we're going and we're gonna have to use some creative thinking, so.
Uh, did you have questions that had come in online? You want to get to a couple of those?
I've got, but it seems like a lot of the questions are being addressed, um, in, in, or already with my presentation as well as like Sheridan's question about the CPUC that's been addressed. Um, I I did mention, yeah, their, their role, the CPUC is the, the, um, the oversight agency with the, um, the utilities and their, their position at this time is, um, they came down to hear the reasoning for and what happened, and that's where things stand with them. Um, I I know Marion Hunter, and there are a couple of other people are, who are really, who've invested so much in you, in solar and alternative, um, sources of energy. And there, there are a couple of folks here are trying to find ways to get reimbursed for, for those costs that are incurred. And that's, that, we're, the city is looking into that. We're trying to see if there's some sort of financing, uh, mechanism. That's still, we're still exploring to help, to see how we can help a residence who've incurred the cost to go off the grid. Um, Dennis, the, uh, I know there are a lot of hands up and we'll get to all of you. It's 7:15 and I don't know what the score is. Um, but I know Dennis Chaconia had a question for Calloway S. Robin, now I know where the voice is coming from. Um, is it forwarded forward? Okay. Um, what is the likelihood residents will receive any financial support from the state or federal levels? These are individ- I imagine this, these are individuals. For many of the 400 homes affected, we are faced with rebuilding our homes while paying for improvements or implementation of alternative utilities. We are desperate and need your help. So the, in summary, this question is about individual assistance.
Yeah, and I will continue to reiterate, I do not oversee individual assistance, but, um, I think that we've, I think right now, I mean, this is prob- I'm not trying to punt it back to you, but I think a lot of the city's efforts have been really focused on the public assistance program and trying to appeal that eligibility decision. Um, with individual assistance, the one thing I will say is that there's kind of like the, just like with public assistance, there's a set of criteria that a community has to meet. Um, and for us to even make the request at Calloway S to FEMA for individual assistance, we have to have hundreds of homes that are considered destroyed. Um, and so we're actually going through that whole process and assessing with wildfires right now. I mean, it's a very complicated program, but we have to, like the threshold for a state as big and as populous as California is, we literally have to have hundreds of houses deemed destroyed. And since we're not there for the, the landslide event, we, we don't meet that eligibility criteria. Um, but it's something that we're obviously continuing to monitor. Um, there's always proposed changes, you know, that folks are trying to make towards that program. We're monitoring to see if any of those could potentially apply, but at this time we don't quite hit that threshold and we're not really anywhere close yet.
And and I want to share my perspective on this because I think, um, there's this public perception, and I've said this numerous times, that when there's a, there's a disaster, uh, FEMA comes in and makes people whole and helps people out. You hear about it with the hurricanes. You hear, you get those emails where, um, FEMA is coming to help and but you rather really read those lines because what I've come to learn is, as Robin said, individual assistance. What I've, what I've learned is FEMA is in, is in the business to, to help public agencies, um, to make cities and counties whole and help them get through a disaster for their community. That's where the money comes in and it's very rare that individual assistance gets deployed. There has to be something se- severely catastrophic in a very high number. And there's no set number. It's, it's a case by case. And this is, this is what I was told back in September. Um, and so in, and in the event that individual assistance gets deployed, the maximum amount that usually comes to an individual is $42,000, at 40 or $42,000. And it's typically around five to $6,000 because it's really designed to provide of all individuals with shelter for a few months. A roof over their head for a few months. So it's like a rent payment. It's does, it's not designed to compensate you for a destroyed structure. And I think, you know, when you think about earthquakes and fires and you think, okay, if something happens, um, there's an earthquake, they're gonna come in, that's not what's gonna happen. And what happens is, um, and this, this happened in our incident is actually through a different administration, the small business administration then makes low interest loans available for that, that for individuals whenever, um, FEMA doesn't come in. So if FEMA says no to individual assistance, then it goes down to different departments at the federal level and and those types of funds become available.
All right, you guys have done a great job about communication. You know, you've got people here that I don't think caused us any damage, but they're trying to get us some money. There's an outfit out there with three letters, S C E, have physically caused us damage. They've caused, if you take $75,000 times 280 homes, that's 21 million bucks. Everybody here has paid 21 million bucks to get their houses, uh, it's not even finished yet. Can somebody talk to them and teach them about a bit of PR and bring them to the table like these people here and help us? That's where we need help.
We are, we're right by your side. We are. We know, we, we know what you're going through. We, we had to be the bearer of those. We got those messages. No, I know you're not. I know you're not. But some people are.
Damage in our neighborhood by cords running around the place. Somebody picks up an extension cord. Oh, that's not too hot. You know, that's, that's how we're operating. That's dangerous.
Yes. Yeah, and the, and the wells and the sewer system. Yes, we're customers of S E as well. Who wants to go next?
Uh, quick clarification question. You had said that the FEMA money would be 75% of what the home is valued at in December of 2022. So if the value is $1 million in December of 2022, then the homeowner would receive 700, 750,000. Is that correct?
So the, the purchase, if the, if the price of the home is a million dollars, then FEMA will cover $750,000 of that. And then the homeowner would have to come in and bring in the 25%. So that would come off of that 750, whatever, whatever money you get in, if your equity. And I, I, I don't know that question if it's tax free.
Yeah.
We're not sure of the tax implications of that. I think we can work with the community, um, and and try and identify that for you.
I find, and and thank you very much. You're all doing a wonderful job. Uh, but to just clarify, you said the homeowner would have to come in with 250,000? Or do you mean simply that the homeowner would take a haircut for the 250,000? Okay, thank you.
Ben, Ben's got his hand right next to you.
Um, another, another clarification for our guests who may not be familiar.
Can we get?
I'll, I'll talk. Okay. Clarification of like Ara started with the original land movement, 160 feet, like for instance, underneath my property. And now it's 320 feet underneath my property. And then Ara was saying that my house has moved. So the FEMA money, I mean, it's not my house moving. First, it was 160 feet of land movement. And now it's 320 feet of land movement. Now we call it the Portuguese Ben landslide, but geologists, surveyors do not. They call it land movement, mass movement, creep. Have you ever seen a landslide that's a senior citizen? It started in 1956. So you could say my house is moving. Tell me one house in the whole world that is moving in 10, I can name eight ways that the house move. So where the movement is, it's not really a landslide. It's not kind of like the plate tectonics where the Pacific Plate is moving. I mean, you could call that a landslide. Pacific Plate and the North American Plate sliding past each other, but it's not a landslide. So I think the terminology, the language has to be clear. And then the policies will be, uh, more appropriate. Thank you.
And I, and just in case you're wondering what he meant by the 123, he's talking about the slip planes that in the vertical depth that, that, that if you go about 100 feet into the ground is the Portuguese Ben landslide. And then another 160 feet further, there's another slip plane called the Altamira Slip Plane. So where's the microphone? Still many, and I know we've got some questions here. And by the way, there are 150 people on Zoom, is what I'm being told.
Okay, I've got two questions. First one, if you have an attached vacant lot, is, I think I'm at it. Okay. If you have an attached vacant lot, does that qualify also?
No, it has to be improved with, in terms of prioritization right now, it's, uh, lots with structures.
Okay. And.
It, but if it's a, Robin, if it's separate, um, separate adjacent lot.
I'll ask the, the what if questions. Is it, you're saying your house and you have the vacant parcel next to it, you own both of them? And you'd want to do both of them?
If, if.
It is technically eligible, but I don't know how that falls into the city's prioritization.
Yeah, the prior, yeah, the prioritization for this is we're trying to.
It's one of those, I knew the answer, but I want to hear it.
Okay. Um, and maybe down the road, another opportunity may come.
Because it doesn't free up that much extra lot. The second one I had for you, what is the timeline for this if it happens? I know it's long. I just wanted to.
Um, so honestly, it really depends on if there's any environmental historic preservation issues. I'm just saying like, we have to have, we have to go through a sequel review and a NEPA review. So the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Protection Act. So we have to do, you have to go through some environmental review consultations with uh, federal agencies, and that's something that FEMA and Calloway S do. You guys aren't as property owners or even the city are, you know, you, you guys are definitely not in charge of that. We'll take care of that. Um, so it really depends. It depends on kind of like that Venn diagram, right of, do you have any weird? So it really depends. It depends on kind of like that Venn diagram, right of, do you have any weird biology or biological species? Is there a weird permit that you might need? Do you have lead and asbestos or that kind of stuff? So it'll kind of depend on each structure, right? Ultimately, I mean, I'm going to look to you guys in terms of how long it will take to approve the project. I will say another thing. FEMA's budget was recently, we'll say, extended to cover the HMGP, the Hazard Renegation Grant Program. So pending any sort of continuing resolution at the federal level, it may delay it longer. But I would say between, what, seven to twelve months before the closings, I think would be able to take place, assuming that we're able to get all the appraisals and all that kind of stuff. So it's an extended real estate transaction, but it's not, you know, it's not going to take like fifteen years or anything, but.
Yeah, I think that it, it depends is like not the answer anybody wants to hear, but that often is the answer we have, unfortunately. I, I think there, there are a lot of dependencies. And is your answer, how long does it take to get to closing? Is that specifically what you're interested in as well? Start to stop on that end.
So that can really vary based off of the homeowner and the actual, oh, and the actual implementation of the purchase. But to get FEMA dollars obligated to allow the process to start is really what's in our court, and then we pass it to the state who passes it down. Again, varying based off of EHP, but EHP aside, programmatically and clearing as long as the federal government open and funds are available. I'd say typically four to eight months for the programmatic and obligating side. You know, trying to collect information about the properties and then EHP side again, it's, it can vary based on what's going on, as Robin stated. So I'd say six to eight months to get the programmatically funding out the door. And the project implementation, that's always variable based off the city and the homeowner.
And, and, you know, I don't want to, I'm not going to put any words into Ara's mouth, but I think the priority was to get to the closing and then the demolition would, would happen. So there may be a period of time where the demolition, you know, we're waiting to, it depends on which houses are ultimately selected, right? The city is going to do what they can do to get a very good demolition rate so that, you know, costs are down. If that means that all the properties are in one area, you know, they may all get demolished at the same time. If they're, you know, all over the community, that might slow things down and extend that. But from the closing, I mean, I think within a year, assuming that the federal government's budget, we don't have to wait for a continuing resolution. I will say there are some other California communities because of that had to wait several additional months, some as many as eight months longer. Just because of the federal government budget and FEMA region nine had everything all ready to go. But we had to wait for the continuing resolution to pass. So I just wanted, you know, that's something to consider as well. I will say FEMA region nine has been, you know, really good partners with us throughout this process because like I said, we've had to move at lightning speed. I mean, weeks in our program is lightning speed. And I understand for you guys, that's a lifetime, right? But we're doing everything we can to move as quickly as we can. The application, I think, which is provided in your handouts, it's not super extensive, but it's really just to help the, the, the city go through that, the, the prioritization and to help us with the benefit cost analysis, which is kind of the FEMA requirement that tends to be the most difficult to, to clear. But we feel that there are plenty of properties that will pass that eligibility based on our preliminary reviews.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go through some of the questions here and then we'll go back to the audience. I know Angela had asked a question about the impacts of the landslide on the Island View homeowners. And if you look at the map where we're showing the active area of movement, Island View is not in, in jeopardy. It's not, it's not in even close proximity to where we're seeing the active area of movement in the landslide. Peter is asking, Peter Hildebrandt asked about the, the solar, we covered that comment. Karen Miller wanted to know the eligibility criteria. Karen, I went over it. It's on, it's in the handout that's available on the city's website. Martin wanted to know what the date of the value is. It's December first, twenty twenty two. Madeline is asking about the meets and bounds and the property line. I know she's off of, in the zone six area, we covered that. Claudia Gutierrez asked about the open space in the middle of the private gated community. That's similar to Tasha's question. So we covered that. We got an unknown question about would an open lot be eligible for sale? We just answered that question. No, it would not be. We're trying to remove properties that have structures that are damaged severely or imminent threat of being damaged. So I'll stop there and then go, I think, Jim, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. So a couple of questions, actually more like comments for FEMA representatives. If you could pass this on to your colleagues who work the other side. One, with regards to what Tasha mentioned and the landslide, known landslides in state of California. And I think this is also useful for the city. Just go through the Department of Conservation landslide. They have a very extensive database that captures all the landslides within the state of California, which basically shows tens of millions of people are living on known landslides. So that's item number one. Item number two was with regards to the, this being a known, a quote unquote landslide. My understanding is until the city drilled the wells that went well below three hundred feet below grade and discovered Altamira slide plane was that we didn't know the extent and, and the issue that was going on. So yes, we had the landslides from the shallower slides identified. But the deeper slide, which is from what I understand from city's report, causing the most of the damage, that was not identified until this July time window. So in my, in my opinion, the argument that this was a known landslide is really not valid. Thank you.
And Nikki, that's going to be one of our points of our appeal.
We have one right back here.
Quick question.
Now you just gave them our, 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 our secret here.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Ara, quick question. Just any idea indications of interest for residents that, that are potentially considering this program? Have you had a lot of people say, hey, why don't you just buy my property? I'm just trying to gauge what the, what the interest is in the program.
So interesting enough, yes, I, I've, I've had people come up and say, you know, we'd like someone to buy our property. I, I think at one of the dinners, Mark, Mark had talked to me about it a couple of weeks ago. And so there, there seems to be some interest in, in areas. I can tell you, because I talked to a lot of people, I think there's certain neighborhoods that people like, we're not going anywhere. We're, we're, we're going to, we're going to get through this. We've been through it. But I think there are other areas where residents are saying we, we want out. And so this, this opportunity, which came to us a few weeks ago, is, is, is addressing those requests. So I think there is some interest to that.
Two other sources, just for the group to consider potentially conservation easement to pursue additional funds that may help certain people and also maybe some very well-to-do philanthropists out there, Ilaanquas, Anna Berg, et cetera, et cetera. They're always interested in acquiring more open space. Don't know what the, the desire is out there, but just something to think about.
Jim, you wait for the mic.
Just a couple of clarifications. Oh, you're holding it. Just a couple of clarifications on the program. You mentioned asbestos. Now, some of the homes may have that in their ventilation system. They're built back in nineteen fifties. Instead of holding up an EIR on this, can the homeowner abate that ahead of time and just avoid that whole issue? The abatement process, I've, I've had, I've seen it done for less than fifteen hundred dollars by a professional company. So it just one of, that's an option, just avoid that, holding up an EIR and having all those issues. And so anyway, I just wanted to try to find, and also in terms of the demolition, if I read the instructions correctly, the demolition happens after close of escrow. So that will not be a cost incurred to the homeowner. Is that correct?
It's basically a cost the city is going to incur.
Do you want to answer the question on?
Yeah, so on the asbestos question, you know, it's normally for, yeah, normally for like more hazardous issues than just asbestos going on with the property. However, for trying to abate it beforehand, I'd have to speak with our EHP teams for me to give you a solid answer if we'd allow that with the program. If we could separate it from the federal action, then we could potentially approve that for you to be done before participating in the program. Turn it over to Robin to see if you had any additional comment on that.
I, it would depend if FEMA would allow us to do that, but.
We'll take that one back.
Hi Gordon.
I got a question asked. If the city takes over ownership of a lot in a private community, does that mean the public is allowed to access that?
It, it's, it's typical to the seventeen lots that we own. No, because the, the roads that lead to it are, are private roads. We can't open it up to the public. But, but it's similar. We would, we would own it and it would be open space area.
Copy.
And I know Claudia asked that question as well. And, and while you're, while we're getting to the next question, I know Angela asked the question is why the land is being graded behind the Vanderlip estate. And I just want to remind you, we said this earlier in the presentation, that as part of our, we have six canyons that feed into the landslide. Altamira Canyon, all the way to the west and Klondike Canyon, all the way to the east. As the council funded approximately four million dollars on October first for us to do our winterization efforts. And the winterization is to fill in those fissures. So we're using that as equipment. We're, we're, we're filling in all the fissures, which is doing grading, we're moving earth around. And then we're going to be lining those canyons with what I would call like a pond liner that is, is an impervious surface to prevent water from percolating into the ground and recharging the water table. And that's, that's actually, we're spending four million dollars on a short term solution here just to get us through this winter. Any other, I think, Tasha, yeah.
Okay. So I think there's a question for Ramsey then, to what you're just speaking about Ara. What kind of material is going to be used to line the canyons this time around? Given that about an hour or two ago in the KCLAD board meeting, we were talking about the fact that the tarps that were used last year was an emergency. Oh my God, what are we going to do? Let's just throw some plastic down. And for some of the homeowners, it's actually caused more harm than good, even though everyone was well intentioned. It's created large fissures, crevasses and funnels into some property and additional problem for the streets. So we're curious what specifically is planned for the winterization efforts this year. If you could elaborate on that, that would be helpful.
Sure. Just for the record, I want to note that I don't agree that the liner that we used caused those problems. That's just for the record and I'll set that aside. But we are acting on the advice of the geologist. Primarily, one of the most important things that the geologists have recommended is the fissure filling so that there's a path for the water to convey rather than sitting and going into fissures and grobbins. They say that's actually the most important thing, compacting it so that it conveys. But we'll be using a thicker pond liner this time around that will be better able to withstand movement and better able to convey water as compared to what we used previously.
From the homeowners involved is more, how will that pond liner be sure that we're directing it towards the big drain, especially in Klondike that's going out, they're trying to make sure it goes out to the ocean and, you know, not accidentally cause more damage by going into people's backyards and whatnot. So just how, how that might happen this time around.
Yes, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood the question, but we'll be shaping the water flow, starting at the bottom, working our way up to make sure that there's a path from the bottom all the way up to the city limits. And then actually at the area of the grobbin, we met with, I met with KCLAD. We have our geologists looking at it as well. We'll be shaping that area in the grobbin further up above Seaview according to what KCLAD has told us they would like so that that water is conveyed into the canyon and then continues to go down to the pipe under PV Drive South.
Any other questions?
I have one question, Ara.
For the ones coming online, I've got seventeen or do we have any more than seventeen? Do I need to refresh? Refresh, okay. All right, I gotta refresh. Okay, while, while I'm refreshing.
See, I just want to ask a clarifying question because I was talking with staff. Could you just clarify the comment about cost of demolition for the house and who actually bears that cost? Because I think the memo may say something different.
Brandon, do you want to, do you want to help answer that question? I think we included it in.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so the, there's a list of eligible costs in the handout on page five. And I believe those are going to be all of the costs and it will be that the, that FEMA will pay seventy five percent and the twenty five percent will be borne by the, the property owner by the discounted amount that they will receive. So the twenty five percent of the demolition cost would be borne by the, the property owner.
Okay, and, but it will happen after, after closing.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Brandon.
May I make a follow up comment to a prior question? Oh, that's me over here.
Okay.
To the gentleman in the front row, you asked about how long this would take and thought that Robert and I had after we moved on to another question was, as we get sort of an understanding of the potential property owners who are interested and understand sort of where the project will be, then we're going to be able to have a better idea of where there could be potential EHP or environmental historic preservation issues or non-issues. And so when we have a better understanding there, we'll be able to triage. And then, you know, we'll be working very closely with the state and the city to try and provide a better understanding of timelines. Right now, we don't have a great answer because we don't really know who's interested in what the concerns are. But knowing that time is of the essence for, for all of you here, that's when we, you know, we'll be working very closely together to try and be as communicative as we can, knowing that there's a lot of, it depends. But, you know, we will be able to start narrowing that down as we have a better understanding of properties.
I'm gonna, we do have more questions here. I'm gonna try to address some of these questions. Kui is asking, oh, who should residents contact? You can, if you have any questions or inquiries about this program, email thelandmovement@rpvc.gov address. And I had that up on the screen and, and, and there's information on the city's website and on how to respond or submit questions. Allison Grillo wanted to know if you're involved in the class action lawsuit against RPV, the districts are you eligible for this program? This program is open to anyone who's eligible. However, if you decide to proceed with this property acquisition, you will have to release any liability and any claims against the city. You'd also have to indemnify the city. Let's see, Claudia, Claudia just commented on how this program is going to benefit a lot of our elderly residents that have experienced severe cost impacts to, as a result of damage to their properties. Larry Maislich is asking, what are expectations of getting more money added to the grant? This, this, this cycle is, is limited to the forty two million. Depending on whether there's another federally declared disaster, the way the program is going to, it's a long-term program. So it just doesn't mean that we may get forty two million. The next cycle may only be five million dollars. It may be eighty million dollars. We don't know. It depends on how much money is made available in response to that particular disaster. Nassim wanted to know if a house in Portuguese Bend community is selected for the buyout program, how will the recreation parks be using it since it's a gated? And, and it's not necessarily, it, it, it could be a property that butts the preserve. And so in that case, then it could be added to the preserve. If it's more deeper into the, the, the community association, it would then be considered just an open space lot in that neighborhood. Steve Hinchcliffe wants to know if this program applies to the Portuguese, I think he means the beach club. Yes, it applies to the beach club, Seaview and the Community Association, all three neighborhoods, including Vanderbilt. Anybody, any, any property that's within the affected area of the landslide is eligible for this program. And Madeline is asking a question regarding the meets and bounds. And I know we see things differently between the city and the residents in zone six, so I'm not going to spend more time on that. We've had numerous, numerous discussions for years and years and years. And she comments about, it's not just a zone six, I understand. There's lots. So there's a question from Nick. Have any of the storm drains in the affected area been inspected for damage before the rainy season? I imagine this question is for a Seaview and the storm drains there. Ramsey.
Yes, and there continue to be ongoing inspections as we're doing the winterization work.
There are more questions regarding lots in the gated communities. So those are the same questions. How about Del Cerro Park community? Has the landslide impacted that area? No. If you go to our maps, in fact, the first map that we showed at the beginning of the presentation shows you where the boundary limits are of the landslide complex, as well as where the boundary limits are, where we're tracking the movement. And so those maps are constantly updated and now we're starting to turning the page and we're actually starting to see a deceleration. Carol's asking, would a homeowner who applies for cycle one, but is not selected have priority in, in any? I wouldn't say in any subsequent applications, I wouldn't say you'd have priority. And I, I think the program may be modified. Let's say the, the second cycle may look a little different. We'll try to customize it as we go through this process over the next several years. Jane is asking, what's about an unsafe home that has moved on my property line, but someone else is living in it? And this is, this is the, the question about improvements moving on to other properties. Again, it's a property line issue that keeps coming up. What's the time of getting the appraisal done? And that's from Eva Alduja. That all depends on what happens after November 29th. We want, we will get the application submitted by November 8th. We'll have an idea of how many properties over the next few weeks before the end of the month, we'll put together a package to submit to FEMA. And I think a few weeks after that, we'll have an idea of where, where things are going to go. So we'll continue to communicate to the public. The last question on my, um, my tablet here is 33 from Carol. What is the likelihood of additional cycles? I, I can tell you, I said this, that we do have federal disasters in California pretty much every year. I don't know. We don't know how much money comes and will be funded in the hazard mitigation grant program. It really depends, but anytime there's a federal declared disaster, money typically comes to the hazard mitigation grant program and that applies to all 50 states. So if you're in Ohio and there's a disaster there, FEMA will fund that disaster as, as well for that state.
One thing to note, sorry, this is Stephanie Stevens from FEMA Region Nine. I currently oversee the Building Resilient Infrastructures and Communities Grant Program, which is just another program under the mitigation division. Essentially the same project types are eligible under my program that are eligible under HMGP. The only difference is that HMGP, a federal declaration has to be in place in order for funds to become available. Whereas the BRIC program is actually available annually. And so a notice of funding opportunity is typically released around this time every year. It, it is postponed just slightly because of the federal budget at this time. However, one thing I will say is it is nationally competitive. And so I have worked very closely with Ara and Ramsey. And, you know, if a lot of interest is generated in this HMGP program, it is definitely something that can also be submitted forward nationally competitive through the BRIC program. So.
Great. Yeah. And, and, and by the way, I mean, Stephanie, we, we've been talking to Stephanie for quite some time now on the BRIC grant program. So I'm so glad that you're here. It's the first time I met her in person. Any more questions? I know we're getting close to eight o'clock. Sherry.
I wasn't very clear on my last question. One of my neighbors pointed out via text to me. So can you guys commit that if the properties around us are bought and they become part of the preserve? For example, on, in, on Vanderlip, that you would never take our property by eminent domain? Ever, not as part of the spy out, but ever.
I can't say what, what 10, 15, 20 years from now, someone's going to say it's not in our horizon to take on, use eminent domain to acquire properties. We just don't have the means to do that. And, but I, I honestly can't tell you what happens in 15 years or 20 years from now.
The city has no plan nor any desire to use eminent domain to forcibly remove anybody from any property. This is a complete voluntary program. So this is an opportunity for folks to apply if they want to take advantage of this great program from FEMA and CalOES. And the city is just trying to help administer it and do it as fair and equitably as possible.
So Kent, Kent Patridge is asking, well, because the land has been moving all over the entire, you know, within the affected area, it's, it may have affected property lines. I don't think for, from what I'm, and that may be a case and he may be raising a legitimate question, but from what we've seen, I don't think the structures have moved in certain zones. And if you know the landslide complex where we've got about eight different zones, I don't think for the most part that we've had the degree of movement where the improvements have moved with the land. I think what, what you're seeing in other areas, aside from Zone Six where you're on cargo containers and you're sliding with the land. Most areas, what you're seeing is the structural damage where you're having homes buckle or, or foundations snapped and because, because that's, that's the nature of what's happening. Because your, your foundation, your structure is connected to the ground through the, through the foundation. I, I think Anne Cruz is asking, does the program allow for the owners' tax base to be carried to a new property? If not, is there anything the state can do to allow for that? That's a good question when you buy out. Yeah. So. So it should, and, and we can always get clarification from Assessor Prang, who, who we're in constant communication with on that. Yes.
My guess is any type of tax applications or any type of property value, hold over for assessment value would be whatever it would be if anybody came through and bought your property through a normal real estate.
And, and I'm just going to repeat that unless you want to say it in the mic, just so the audio. But essentially it's, it's a typical real estate transaction in California. And so yes, the, the, your property tax should carry over, but we will get a confirmation from Assessor Prang on that. I know we're, we're getting, we're nearing eight o'clock here and I, I think some of you want to go home and watch whatever's on television tonight. Last inning. So maybe I can get you home for the big victories. I am not keeping track of scores, so I can hear people are watching. I know Tasha has a question, then you have a question.
For older people, obviously if they keep the assessed value, let's just say it's a million bucks. They should be able to carry it over to a new house because obviously they aren't going to be able to afford it. Like, is that going to be an option for them to help them on their taxes for the new home?
And, and I think that's what, that's what we're, it's like a 10.
Whatever it would be in a normal real estate.
You only allowed one, three now? Okay, cool.
Thank you. Tasha, did you have another question? Okay.
So for the people who may be considering this, they're based on the priority ranking, the people who are in the worst situation right now. And either being red tagged or yellow tagged or opening themselves up to that possibility. And if I'm hearing that the process, there's the application process and then there's the, the extended escrow. In the meantime, they're not going to be allowed to live in that home until it's determined whether it would actually work. Is there any kind of mortgage relief for them or any kind of relief? Or are they just, they still have to keep paying on this home until they have the buyout? Because they're already in a really bad financial place. So I just want to ask from a logistical standpoint.
Which is why I stress.
Question in me.
No, no, it's a very good point, but that's why I stressed if you, because the priorities given to red, yellow tagged, or those imminent to have an imminent threat to being yellow or red tagged. Before you call the city to have an inspection inspector come out, if you think your structure is experienced a lot of damage, if it's red tagged, you will be, you will be required to move out.
For it, until it's determined whether FEMA will buy it or not.
Yes, this program does not cover that. That's what, that's why I, that's why I said it and I continue to say it.
It's between the resident and their lender. I mean, we don't have anything to do with whatever lien is on those properties. So it.
It likely precludes them being able to be part of it.
If the bank takes, takes possession of the house for, during a foreclosure for, for failure to payment, you're correct. It would be, it would not be eligible at that point.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay. Sorry, I got a question over here. I got a question over here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about behind my properties, the, the tarps that you guys put up last year. And I have to disagree with Ramsey, which I like the guy a lot, but they caused a lot of damage. It created a funnel and, and actually channeled all the water into my neighbor's backyard. I have video here, pictures I've already posted. It's created a tremendous amount of damage. And that water was all supposed to drain into the Klondike Canyon, which would have been, shouldn't have been good to begin with. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. And I'm also concerned that last year, we're doing the same thing we did on Dauntless. We're channeling all the water into my front yard and you guys have put concrete boxes down there, catch basins. They're not adequate and it's going to create a big problem. There's a huge hole, a chasm in front of my yard. And I've been asking the city now for about three months to deliver soil. And we've even spoken to Zachary several times and I've not gotten any soil delivered. I'll, I'll dispense the soil as need be, but you are going to create a bigger problem and you did last year and I have proof of it. I've got video of it, the water crossing the roads and coming into my yard and into my neighbor, no names mentioned, to my neighbor's yard. And it caused a huge amount of damage. And I would like to show all the, everybody here, I will post it online to show you the before and the afters, which I have right here.
No, and I know you've posted it last year. I've seen all your videos and stuff, but, um, we do provide residents the soil. We've been, and this is at the city's expense. So I don't, I don't, I don't recall. Oh, for this, but you said something about the front of your house, you needed soil. It's in the city. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we'll fill it. Okay. We'll fill it this week.
Yeah, we're, but, but by the way, we.
We'll fill it this week.
We're, we're, we're getting to, we're getting a lot of requests for the soil. We're getting to it. In fact, I, I think we, our vendor has run out of soil. So we're trying.
We will fill it this week.
Okay.
It's perfect for planting and gardens. Sorry. It's great for planting for gardens, but to fill the fissures, it's not adequate. It just, it's like sand. It's sand and loam. It's, it's good quality, but it's not for filling fissures.
Thank you for letting us know. I mean, we're doing our best. Look, this is normally not a cost under normal circumstances. The city would not be providing private property owners materials, but we are doing that. We're doing our best. And this is at the city's cost. Yeah, sure.
Of dirt up where the hydrogers were put in, there's a lot of dirt that was left up there that had bentonite and sand and clay in it. Why don't you grab some of that dirt that's up there that, that's piled up along the trails where the hydrogers were going, you know, where the trucks were digging up? That's great dirt for filling fissures.
Are you, because we, we didn't put any hydrogers in, but are you?
Well, not hydrogers, where you're pouring, where they put all the roads in, they built all these roads up through there. There's dirt all along the side of that and it's filled with bentonite. It's filled with clay. It's really good for packing. You guys could get that dirt for free. Well, for the cost of picking it up and taking it.
Good suggestion. Okay. Any more questions? You all want to go home? All right. We'll sit, look, one last thing. If you have any questions, you can email landmovement@rpvc.gov. I'll hang around if you have any questions. Thank you everyone for being here on World Series. Oh, we're here. Wait, wait.
Before you leave, I actually did want to thank our representatives from both the state and federal government. And, and trust me that the city council, the two main things that we focused on is number one, slowing the landslide down. And number two, getting the power turned back on. And, and we know that's the most important thing. So the things that you said today are things that we're focused on as well. Anyhow, I want to also thank our city manager, Armaurani, for all his effort. And our public works director, Randy Awat, and our entire city staff. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Go Dodgers.